It's no.
Sorry. Meeting to ord- called, meeting to order at what time now? Eleven?
Eleven oh one.
Eleven oh one, okay uh. I have a full complement of the trustees, we actually have a lot just for uh Tergulov and. I would like to acknowledge the presence of our legal counsel. And the CEO.
And it's slow over I said zooming.
Oh, okay, trust you do on the zoom uh meeting on this. Okay. Where's my agenda? Oops, here we go. No, I think I have it. Because they gave me all the minutes from last time. Okay, CEO. Any unfinished business? Let's have an approval minutes of April twenty second twenty twenty five. Do I, do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes?
I seconded.
Motion on the floor, we both. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any unfinished, unfinished business, CEO?
Yes, CEO report grants and other federal assistance, I just would like to report on AmeriCorps updates. Um last board meeting, uh the chairwoman requested to make sure that the work miss compensation is coverage is for also our uh members. So we reached out to our um um insurance company and they be informed then that we have twenty nine additional um AmeriCorps members, which considered like part-time workers.
And clerical to this responsibility, but this is different on the compensation of premium. If they are, if they are janitors, if they're clerical, there are two different exposures of risk, right?
Are covered, are covered.
Clerical rates?
No, they said that uh if they're, they will be covered, all we have to do is to inform them of their um scope of work and description, so I had to send them that these members will be stay doing work on campus and also will be going to mayor's office or other community. So, no, they, they get got off or they would try, but it's just to make sure that it is updated on the conference.
I have, I have a question. You guys do the same thing, but the mercy.
Yes, but depending on our own project. Well, there's only two AmeriCorps members this festival year, it's the U O G AmeriCorps and Wuhan Academy AmeriCorps. So our project is focused on pre-mentoring and tutoring, so they come here and help out our teachers.
What, so what, what's the number? The number for this class?
Twenty-two, so there's new seven, so there's twenty-nine.
Oh.
The nine are still getting their clearances. That chance and all that.
Please support.
So they're co- they're covered also with our work miss compensation, which is what we assured the workers.
Can you tell us about the cost?
Uh they haven't gotten back to me, they initially they said there shouldn't be any, but we still we applied for that in the grant. So we, if they fulfill us if the difference, the work is comp that is also covered with the request of the.
The com- your work miss compensation is based on parallel position.
Uh the number of employees, is the number of employees.
Uh if you generalize the number of employee, the risk that one employee might not have, might, might, might the other one might have. So you bet, I wanna review the work miss comp. I'll see.
Yes, that's why I emailed them and gave them the actual work release of the additional twenty-nine members. That way they will get back to us and see if there's actually difference in the compensation.
The risk that everybody have are different.
Uh premium.
So they did it, it looks like they did an overall premium for like but the different positions are, were declared on the policy, correct?
Yes.
Substitution is company now.
Yes. That's true. Next part is the C and P updates, uh on May second, uh during a work session, I presented to the board the proposal of a price increase that has been requested by our vendor back in January. Uh the two reasons that they indicated for a price increases first. Our I F B proposal in the beginning, uh we indicated that we're ordering breakfast and meals around six hundred ninety or seven hundred for seven hundred students because these seven hundred students are qualified to get free or reduced meals. However, since they, since the vendor started dividing our meals, uh we only ordered two hundred twenty-five for breakfast and four hundred for um lunch. That is based on the students who are coming in to get their breakfast and lunch. Uh we don't want to waste, so we cut down our orders, so that's number one reason why they're requesting for this, when they gave us a proposal of that amount, uh they anticipated that's a six hundred some preparation. Number two reason why they are requesting for a price increase is because of the uh cost of goods now, especially eggs. So we got all those paperwork, um that it's to determine uh they showed us a computation and a sample invoices of their their, their, the price increase that they paid, that we presented at the board during the May second uh May second uh work session. The request of the vendor is twenty percent of the cost of the breakfast and lunch, but the proposal that I have submitted to you for your approval is twenty percent for breakfast and fifteen percent for lunch. So if you approve that effective April first. Sorry, um they requested for this.
What is your guaranteed number of the meals, breakfast and lunch? You have, have to guarantee a number of, of meals served?
To the vendor?
To the vendor?
No, we just give the, we guaranteed two hundred twenty-five for breakfast and four hundred for because based on the trend and based on reviews.
So that's per meal, I have seven something on breakfast, I have something on, I've seven something on lunch. So different for uh one pricing, but to the two fitting.
Yes, one price, so the total for breakfast and lunch is seven fifty and eighty.
But what's your guarantee amount of, number of students to?
Two hundred for breakfast and for two hundred.
Down your, you have tracked down your, your, your users.
Breakfast, they don't come in, they want straight to. We tried that before, so for, for the past or three and a half years, we've been only ordering that based on their consumption rather than based on their quality. So not everybody will avoid waste, they just, yeah. And you're, you were at seven hundred, right, for the I F B? Yes, so the I F B was at seven hundred. Hundred, so their proposal, of course, that is a that's a significant.
Significant drop would that be, this would like a legal question, on the overall contract? Is that something that, you know, we will not, we will, we are responsible to pay X amount as we have it on the I F B, no? So whatever serve, whatever it's, it might.
Yes, the contract indicates that what, how much we order is how much we're going to go over, or what we order. So our contract, the I F B, how it was directed.
Very, very lucky.
That's the reason too why we're trying to accommodate their requests as well. And the reason for that I F B is because we were recently approved for child nutrition program. So in November, we, last actually August or twenty-four, twenty-five, we are approved under child nutrition program, which means that before locally we pay our vendor for the breakfast and the cost, now we get reimbursed by federal program, so we get sixty-six percent. That's good, so we have the money to actually pay, and we have been getting reimbursed. Um this school year also is the second year that our students are qualified for the E B T. Uh some are E B T, so last year we decided they were part of Wuhan is the first school other than D O E and D A who gets that.
It could uh.
You could have them, if you could have the motion for.
And all those paperwork were. At her.
It's a, it's a team effort, we welcome our, our new program coordinator for meals.
So, that, well, I move that we increase the breakfast cost from
Uh food point.
From do whatever that amount to twenty percent for this coming academy year.
April first.
April first, starting April first, twenty percent for breakfast and fifty percent for lunch. I seconded.
Motion first and second, motion on the floor and second then, I need to, I need to both, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Have it, any, any question, any discussion? Okay, next item.
Next accreditation curriculum updates, Cognia final report was sent, was uh given to us. So congratulations to the school for getting that accreditation, your credit.
How many years?
Um sixty years, but officially they will send us the official certificate in four weeks' time until they um do their board meeting.
It's, it's a joy to our world.
Yes, the final report, we provided the final report, review report of the team to each of the trustee.
Um. That's so bad.
Last, um, the last P D held May twenty eighth, um, we um showed the results to the faculty and staff just to make sure because that's part of it, and then we have so much work to do, it's not done, it's continuous improvement is
Can, can we share this with the council?
Already sent, already sent to the council.
What is, I think the, the, the things that need to have, I, that it, that needs to be addressed by CEO and your, your your group are already mentioned in here, so uh not so bad, I think on the, on the, on the scale of like what is maximum, we're almost what, on the eighty percent threshold? So we, we're doing well, but we do definitely to, to more, to do more.
Yes, and we have to need the we have to need the recommendations of the L I V.
Thanks to you guys, thanks to everybody.
For all the hard work.
You guys have worked so hard for this.
Yes.
We're just the talliers, we tally.
We, we have to make sure that we need all the recommendations too um for this, uh starting this school year, that's what we need to work on.
Well, the three major recommendations, I do not know if we have the opportunity to meet a report, but the three major recommendation, everything is focusing in the classroom.
Alright.
Everything focuses in the classroom, the three major recommendation. The two um rec- um commendations is essentially the governing authority and the leaders, uh that they demonstrated commitment are consistent with the guiding principles that we developed and the board goals that we developed in October fifteen, twenty twenty forward. So, so um I'm, I'm very happy to, to see that, but the governing authority uh was given also uh kudos by the, by the Cognia, we are team that we establish a clear focus on the policies and practices and leveraging our deep expertise, experience, and networks. This is you're making reference to the uh strategic plan and they're making reference to the culture career readiness program that we are updating the policies um over the, over this past year and, you know, and, and thank the board for uh, you know, supporting those efforts, I really do. But then for the three major recommendations, um that's the they wanted us to look more into uh incorporating uh different teaching strategies in the classroom, providing additional technology, engagement in the classrooms, student engagement. And then also for the
Project-based learning.
Project-based learning. And, and the technology, the infusing, infusing technology in the classroom.
Which is part of the differentiated instruction, differentiated.
Right, yeah.
We'll go in deeper on that, um, because we have and I think you need to, whenever you publicly focus on the accreditation, you need to remind them that the uh Cognia average score is two ninety-six, so we scored above the, so we are above average this year. So I think that it's important whenever like the council, we have to meet with the council, the special accreditation and the chartering that we tell them that the accreditation is not just average or even below average, right? We are above average. We may, we, we're not Harvard, right?
I think we're just waiting for the final statement of Cognia to put it in black and white, and they'll be really clean, and yeah, we're waiting, we're waiting. We're just waiting for their final decree.
Well, we saw the three eighteen.
Three point eight.
Three, right, three point one eight and they're well, two hundred and ninety-six.
Yeah, exactly. And that is, that is all schools all over the world, once we get the final, the final. So we could now move on to just the district-wide assessment update, I just would like to update the board that we finished all the district-wide assessment, uh conducting the D W A, which is smarter balance, this will be the second year that we're dating smarter balance. Um the students tested are only grades three to um eight, three, three to eight, and only one grade level, eleventh grade for the high school. So, that's just how they identify the um the grade levels, the population that are tested for smarter balance. So the next step is to wait for the actual scores individually sometime according to D O E sometime June or July. How do you like, is when we get it back? So because our first, our first smarter balance results was for the last spring, that will be our baseline data, particularly for smarter balance assessment. And then this school year is where we will start the trend and see if there's improvement for grade level. Um.
Yes.
Attendance and behaviors data um in your packet, we have the for the month of April, we have not completed the month of May. Um it's the same report, um we would notice there's a, a slight decrease and again we are still in the process of identifying, fixing R A N W E B so that the attendance that would show or that will be captured is, is more accurate, meaning um if it's, for example, we have to identify what is the attendance rate. For example, if a student in high school was present for more than four hours in a day, then that's considered present, just like us, how do you determine that? Because currently, how our setup is on R A N W E B is that if a high school student was in the whole day, there's like five um classes or four classes in a day. If one is absent, if a student is absent in the first period but present on all three, that's already considered absent. That's the reason why our attendance rate is still low. So, and at the same time, the reason why we did that is because previously, the school has been taking attendance from the homeroom. However, that's also inaccurate because
Yes.
from when we started in twenty thirteen, uh if a student is present for the first fifteen minutes in homeroom but absent for the whole day, it's counted as present.
Yeah.
So, the last school year twenty-five, uh twenty-four, twenty-five, what we did is kind of remove the homeroom and incorporated homeroom with the first block so that the students will take their homeroom seriously because there has been a pattern that we observed last year that, oh, homeroom is not important, and so we'll be late in homeroom, let's just show up on our first period class. So, because in our C C R meeting or college career meeting, it was uh recommended Mister Charpal, I think we still remember that we incorporate the homeroom and the first block so that they can take their first, their home seriously. We only this school year, the first year, last school year, the first year, we made we made the first block the homeroom. The thing is, R A N W E B is only count, is counting absent if one child is fully absent for one block, then you're not the absent for the first day. So we're reaching out to R A N W E B, uh to make sure that they train us on how to set up our attendance so that it would capture.
So what is their response?
We were, we're waiting because, you know, for platform, they keep changing, updating the system. But definitely, as soon as I hear from our provider, then I will inform the board. Next in your packet is the behavior for April and May. So for the month of April, there are twenty uh O D Rs or uh behavior reports. The number one in um infraction, having seven infraction is use or possession of contraband, that is bait as usual for the month of April. The second, the offense is abusive language and disruption for the month of April. And then for the month of May, uh the number one infraction or violation to the discipline policy is nine behavior referrals for, um I'm sorry, seven. For this, uh seven is skipping and seven for abusive language. It is a pattern, right? May is the last month, so they're just skipping, trying to hang out, going to other homes, bouncing with their classmates before. Um, the usual, the number two base, uh the number one base that they make, commit those inflections is on Tuesday and Wednesday for the month of April and then for the month of uh May is Thursday because it's the last day, almost Friday. If you have any, do you have any questions as well, so you can proceed? Okay, so next would be graduation data. Um specifically, we, I, we have tried to look into the graduation rates. Previously, every, every centric report or how the school does the reporting for graduation rates is number of graduates over the total number of seniors that school year. So Mister Charpal has provided me with the formula that is being used by the national.
National Council of uh.
Statistics.
Statistics, yeah.
So I compared the results for this past school year and using both formula, we have eighty-three percent. Um, I just wanna give you um the numbers specifically. As of September thirty twenty twenty for last year, there were fifty-three seniors only for the senior class, thirteen withdrew in different times. So technically, there's now forty, four zero. However, it must be noted that from that fifty-three seniors when we first started, twelve of them came from the P dispatch because they did not finish or they did not complete their credits. So we encourage them to re-enroll and complete their credits here at G A C S rather than going to another school. So twelve of them stayed or re-enrolled to be seniors to complete their credits. Um from the twelve that returned on the fifty-three, there's only thirty that is from the original cohort. The cohort that I'm talking about is they were here since ninth, ten, eleven, and twelve. Um three extra enrolled at a later time. Uh like twenty twenty-two or twenty-three, meaning they enrolled at G A C S um during their, their tenth grade or eleventh grade or tenth grade. So the cohort, um there was a suggestion that oh, rather by, we also look at the study of our cohort because that means the cohort, when they start their ninth grade here, it's good to determine because they completed the required credits for the school. So from the fifty-three and the thirteen that we drew, um forty, from that forty, seven of them are from the P dispatch. Um from that seven, five of them graduated and completed their credit, those who still did not, and then actually the two is just like one and off. I mean.
Right, but, but we only graduated thirty this year, so the seven.
The one, from the thirty.
They graduated in December, did they finish?
Three of those five graduated after the first semester. So they already withdrew, so, so three of them. But the four stayed and they are part of the graduation during the, during the Saturday. So.
Why we have thirty?
I, I remember the televictoria of this, little brother's speech in which she moved touch base on being going to J F K.
Did they have come back? She's in the same cohort because she came here ninth grade and then she left for for partial and then returning, but she was here since um fourth grade, I think, and fifth grade. So that she belongs to the cohort who really actually started here on ninth.
So she is one of those.
Yes, so going back to the number of students um registered on R A N W E B, our student information system, forty of those minus seven from the batch of twenty twenty-four and the three who in, in, in the middle of the like twenty-two or twenty-three school year. So, there, um, the graduation, the ones who graduated from the specific cohort, twenty-five of, out of that specific, twenty-five out of the thirty graduated their credits. Six from the seven, um, six came from um the batch of twenty twenty-four, meaning they, they were supposed to graduate from from last school year, and then two of them already graduated earlier after the first semester. So that's a total of thirty-three graduates over forty, which is, which comes out to eighty-two point five percent, eighty-three percent. And then I use also the formula that Mister Ken provided with the withdrawals, it came out to be eighty-three percent, so somehow it's matching. So next school year, I will do the same um determination and see the difference of uh, the difference between the two formula. So technically, final eighty-three percent of our, um, our populations, near population.
I agree.
Compared to the last year, which is eighty, seventy. It's better, it's better than my island mine.
Yeah.
The island mine averages. And we encourage.
Ninety percent. Because the, our goal really at least ninety percent for seniors to answer, like that's the goal in the D O E.
And then it's not, it will be it's ninety percent. Has it ever been met?
Yeah, yeah, they exceeded it already.
This year?
Several years ago.
Several years ago.
I was gonna say, the last time I was paying attention, it was like fifty percent. I think the one that, oh, you know what, I took it that, it's the, the analysis is different. It's from the number of students who enter freshman year, yes, and then numbers who graduate, that's the fifty percent that I'm thinking.
Right, so that, so now the M C S said no more annual graduation rate because that doesn't serve any purpose. You have to use, right, the cohort graduation rate from ninth grade to twelve grade. And so we, when we did that, it showed that we are exceeding, uh beyond, beyond ninety percent. So it's, it's looking good.
And that includes the summer, summer graduation, right?
Oh, they included the summer graduations, they include summer graduation.
Is that CEO?
Yes.
Any question on the CEO report?
I know.
The only thing that I wanted, again, the district-wide assessment, and this is where the principle comes in. That I, 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 I know I gave this to the board, uh and, and it just was already, but our students, uh, we need to, to be more Our students, uh we need to to be more. Um assertive in what we do in the year because. We tested six hundred and ninety two students of that. Uh right, of that six hundred and ninety two, six hundred and forty seven. Fourth, I have books one and two. One and two, six hundred and forty seven. And only forty five out of six hundred and ninety two of four. At proficient level or.
What is that? What what? Is this a smart balance? How many years are you supposed to be able to track progress? So this is only the first year?
This is our baseline data. Well, now you've been using the A C T Aspire uh data, so we switch over from A C T Aspire to Smarter Balance. So ninety three percent of students did not make the mark, and notice is presented. And this why that's why it's consistent with the accreditation recommendation. That we really need to focus on the instructional practices of our teachers. On curriculum instruction, assessment and intervention has to be incorporated and thus be part of our major. Actual plan, and we have already addressed that to the strategic plan. As long as we execute the plan and we monitor the instructional. Programs that are happening in our school, in our classroom. I'm going to predict that we are going to really make a profound impact now. The CEO and the principal did a good job this past year because we used the Renaissance program. And we saw a a significant increase this year. From last year, our students' performance, that's a good indicator from hoping. That by July, we would see we see the uh district rate assessment. To see if that correlates with the Renaissance uh performance, the Renaissance is a score assessment only. It's a success score assessment because the district rate assessment is the one that comes.
But they're both based on the standard.
Standards, that's right. Thank you.
Um let let's get further on this other next issue, I would like to have uh jump into the new business because the council also have. Other appointments, can we? Yeah, can we get the council to be uh on this item? Uh the legal opinions on bylaws number point two election. Let's allow the council to.
Well, I move, I approve.
Item number one, motion carried, thank you.
Um so if I may ask, Cam, could you do just a quick overview on how kind of this ended up in my lap? So sometime in May nine, our May nine or ten, there's a request of trustee Ken to uh. Conduct on election of officers, particularly for the chairwoman and vice ship. Chair chair position and vice chair. Um because we don't have specific guidelines in our bylaws. That says when to do the election or at what platform, whether it's a vote or a ballot. I asked the uh the legal counsel for opinion to, R B. Um, can you provide us your opinion? And I invited her supposed to be to join us on our May twenty third work meeting. But because she wouldn't couldn't make it, so um. That's what happened, we requested for her to join and thank you for the words that come in. Thank her presence.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much for that, and so, no, um. I I think that this this issue is extremely important as it relates to the necessity to really work on our bylaws. I mean, this really highlights kind of the issues that we have in our bylaws. Um I the last time I spoke with uh the debt from accounting, right, I asked her to take our bylaws. And put it in like a notebook formatting. Um so that we can go through um and on an executive committee session, right? And I'm hoping that we're still gonna be able to do this, right? And hoping that we can dedicate some time, um what is it, over the next few months to address some of the amendments. So I'll address the legal opinion and then I'm gonna give you an example, right, inside of our bylaws, uh in addition to this particular issue. Right, so first of all, you know, if we got this request, right? Um uh trustee Charval has sent a request and said, hey, um I'd like this uh election to be put on um our agenda. And so the question became, well, legal counsel, can you tell us how we're supposed to deal with this, right? Um we received this request, how how do we address it, right? And then my answer was, well, check our bylaws, right? What does our bylaws say about, right? And that's always the issue when you have bylaws, they don't give you proper guidance, right, number one. Number two, our fallback, every time we don't have proper guidance under our bylaws. Is we go to the Guam Business Corporation Act, right? So we've got two, it can be very confusing, right? So there is the Guam Corporation Act and then there's the Guam Business Corporation Act. Um so everyone who was formed prior to two thousand and ten got are governed by the two thousand and nine. Unless they don't want to, okay, this is the crazy thing about the law, right? So everyone who was formed, like uh corporations that have existed pre two thousand and nine, they're governed by this old law. Under the old law, it actually has provisions for the election of directors and officers in the event that it's not covered in the bylaws. But we were formed in two thousand and ten, which puts us into the new law, right? And the new law doesn't have anything, the new law says, uh that's the job of the boards, right? And and it's true, it is the job of the board to make these determinations. And that's the reason why this legal opinion comes out the way that it does, right? So first of all, I think it's most important to say that our articles and our bylaws do not address this issue whatsoever. But our current bylaws create a confusion, okay? I don't go into all the confusing things that our bylaws create. But um and I hope you all had a chance to see it, did everyone have a chance to see it? Um the and the reason why I say that is because, first of all, my recommendation is that notice of meetings, especially for things that we need to be on the agenda. Should not be on social platforms, okay? Um we need to keep it as formal as possible while we want something definitive, right? But also it has to be very specific, right? So for example, right, um trustee Charval, when you send a message that says. I am um requesting that it be placed on the agenda under rule whatever, uh that this be done, right? Well, what's this? Tell us what this is. Well, I want an election. Sure, but an election for what? An election of officers. Well, which officers, right? So you see, right, you have to be a little bit more specific as well, right? So if you were going to rewrite this, I would say I would send an email to the secretary, and that's the other thing, right? See, lots of things, right? Um as I said, there is no official secretary of the board. The board has previously designated the CEO to act as secretary to take minutes, right? I mean, and that's that's up to, that's your power, you can be that, you don't have to have a secretary. You have the ability to tell the secret, to appoint a designated secretary, right? Um but you see, then there becomes this problem under rule nine point two. That we want our CEO to be the secretary because she's the one who handles our agenda, she's the one who handles our notices. But the rule says she can't serve in that capacity for more than two. Why why don't we want her sitting in that capacity for two years? We need her to be sitting in that capacity for two years. Same thing with uh Mister Ebbel, right? You're the treasurer, well, you're likely the only person on the board who has the financial background. To sit in that position, right? Uh which is why we probably put you there, we can, oh, we meaning you, okay, not me. And so, um the thing is, but there if there's nobody else who has the requisite skill. Then why would we want to move him? So then the question becomes, is this two-year restriction something that we want to even keep in here? And seeing the way that the board has governed itself since I've been involved, now you remember, I've only been here since two thousand and nineteen. I mean, I wasn't here before then, I don't even know what happened before that, but I do know that. The chairperson signed documents from twenty ten.
Yes.
Which means the chairperson has been sitting in this chair for. Since the dawn of time, right? And so, so then that means if if I don't, so I don't have access to all your minutes, right? And and you know, I'm not suggesting even that I go through your minutes to say, oh, this is what happened, right? I think that that's a waste of our time and our efforts. I think it's much better for us to go forward and say, well, do is this a good policy for us, right? We're such a small board to begin with. Should we have this two-year provision and since we haven't been following it for sixteen years, what have we been doing, right? Whenever we've had our annual meeting, what do we do? So you know, we have to look at that as well, so if you look at our bylaws, our annual meeting is held in November, right? So every November, so general corporations, okay, I mean, and I'm talking about generically, every corporation that I know. Uses the annual meeting to do their elections.
So what is the difference between annual meeting and regular board meeting?
So the annual meetings, and that's the thing, is under general corporate law, the annual meeting is uh to deal with the elections. Of either the officers or the directors. Because in other corporations, you have the election of directors on a regular basis. People don't sit as directors forever, right? So it kind of let you get, like G V B, for example, you guys are familiar with G V B. And you saw all the news about their election of the directors and who gets to sit as whoever, right? And that's the way it is in most every other corporation. Now, our corporation is a little bit funky. And I say funky because it's the best word that could come up. Work, a nonprofit corporation, right? Okay, sure, we're non-profit. Then we say, and the the one business corporate law applies to us. Okay, so how does that work then, under the board of director structure defined under? Well, it doesn't quite work the same way, right, is the answer. And then you say, well, then, uh if you look at Gats's board, well, we have our own um bylaws and articles. And does that comply with the Charter Act, right? Because there's also provisions under the Charter Act that by. Right, so that's the thing, is you have all these different laws that apply to our corporation. And what we're trying to do is trying to, in good faith, navigate um the intention. So for example, almost every corporation in the world can meet or not. But we don't even have to meet on a regular basis, annual meeting, one meeting is good enough, right? Uh in fact, most of my boards, I never see them, I see them once a year, once a year, they're like, hey, Jackie, you know, can we appear? Um and then we say, oh, we don't really feel like it, can we just do a unanimous, right? Can't we just sign off on a, what is it, board or shareholder meeting and that was not concluded this year? And it's done, but this board, we can't do that, right? Because the open government requires us to post it, publish it, have a public hearing. So it becomes, you know, well, what are we exactly, are we? And that's why I say we're funky, right? We're just a little bit, you know, I you know what, in my brain, I think of like a little cute little dog with like a lip. And then his ears like fall into the side, right? Very visual, right? Uh because it's like he's trying to move along and everybody loves him and he's so darn cute. Uh because of that one floppy ear. But the problem is he's limping because he's got all these restrictions tying him down, right? So this is why this image, you know, comes to my mind when I think of what our charter school is under Guam's law. And so then that says, so then what does that mean for trustee Charval's request, right? My recommendation, okay, based on what you've seen in my paper, is that we take it step by step. The first thing is you have to determine what method you want to use. You can't just jump into an election, cannot, right? And the reason why that is, is because you're gonna notice an election, they say, okay, let's say, for example, you struck that. And notice the election for these officer positions for June thirtieth, okay? Well, then we're gonna get to the June thirtieth meeting and then trustee Ebbel is gonna raise his hand and say, uh, how are we supposed to do this, guys? And then you're gonna say, wait, hold on, I guess we can't hold the election today, we need to address first how we're wanting to proceed. So this is why my recommendation is, what you need to do is you need to first determine. So an executive session is required, you need to meet on an executive committee level to look at different proposals. How to handle election of officers, when you want it, whether or not this restriction is still good or not, do you want to keep the restriction in the books or not? Um but these kinds of issues, right? So you've got to first do the executive session, then you can get to the first notice. And then once that first notice, then you can adopt whatever it is, the amendment that you guys. And then so now you're applying things, right? So then you'll finally get to the election and hold the election in accordance with Ebbel who decided. Now, this board has absolute control over the corporate business affairs, okay? You get to decide, you know, timing, everything, but it's also my recommendation that you've got an an annual meeting coming up. Um it would be my recommendation, right, if we met an executive session, that we would put something together and put that in place before. The November annual meeting, so that then at the annual meeting, then you can say confidently, right? That we're having an election, right? Um so that and then we're gonna say, okay, well, how is this election gonna be done? Well, there's five of you, okay, I mean, there's no need to get Survey Monkey into place or, you know. I mean, there's really no need to get a very complicated process. Now, if you had a board of a hundred people, then maybe we need to do election. Now, this is where I said I didn't address in this document, the convoluted nature of your system, right? Because if you open your bylaws, I don't know if you have them with you, right? But I wanted you to open it up to article six, which talks about members, right? Um and I read that and I said, um.
There's. We're bringing in uh someone already today, so.
Well, no, we're talking about a trustee, not a member, you see?
Yeah.
No, that's what I'm talking about. This is why I'm telling you, you have this convoluted.
The the bylaws.
Go to article six, it talks about this fictitious member. Right, and so and the reason why this is important, as I said, is it creates this ambiguity is because. Under this section, it gives the power to the elect the trustees to dissolve the corporation, to merge the. To these members, and you go, well. Um anybody see these numbers? I mean, I actually wrote, I said, when was the last participation we had from the member? Where is this list of members? Who are these members, right? Because when we talk about election of officers, right, we go down to nine point four, right? And at nine point four, it says, no officer shall be removed by the board of trustees without the written approval of the. Guess who? Member.
A member.
Can the members please stand? Where are these members? But the members can be candidates, right? The members can be students, the members can be, but this is why I'm saying that our. Our bylaws need to be fixed because we, under this section, it creates this legal member that should, that is inconsistent with. So these legal members have no right to be controlling the corporation, but it grants this right here. So this, I would tell you, is ultra virus to the corporation. It violates the terms of the statute, but this should not be here. And the reason why that is, is because it's the board that holds the power under both the law and our bylaws, right? And if you go eight point one, eight point one says you guys have the powers. So that's why you say, if I'm looking at eight point one, yes, and that that is this board who has the authority. Then how the heck the six point two?
So the proposal is to repeal that.
Yes, we would take that out.
And you'll be the one diving or solving this.
Absolutely.
We've been, this is actually the, we could say officially, our third work session on updating the bylaws.
Yeah, absolutely, right?
With you.
And so this is more, I I want to give you guys, I asked the debt to do this for me, the last time I did with that work session. I asked her to create like a notebook session, right, beside it, so that that way you guys can write your notes. Um I'm actually gonna ask that when they print it for you, to make it bigger, but also not to do back to back. No, yeah, me included. And then you have the back page for.
So can you commit to leaving it, I even download your office at least once a month?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Actually, I requested once, uh um twice.
Twice a month?
I first requested from the board Saturday, but you said that Saturday is not.
Yeah, exactly.
So what makes that?
And Monday through Friday is difficult too.
So I really need my staff, right, to sit and um confirm the available dates. So why don't we do this, I will plan a two-hour session, work session. Let's try to squeeze in um one or two in the month of June, right? Let's try to squeeze in um one or two in the month of June, right? Um and then one or two in the month, but no less than one. So if we can squeeze two in, depending on your other things that you guys do. Well, then that works out perfectly because um I know that the chairwoman has asked me to participate in this Florida event. So, so I mean, okay, this is jumping, right, from the legal opinion to the Florida. So the Florida event is intended to, um, what is it? Put us into communication. We are already in communication with the private funders, but there are a lot of legal questions, right, that both. That the funder and Ann are asking about. And so we thought, well, if uh I'm available, which I was for that particular week. Then I could go to Florida with them to meet. And we've already asked for a private meeting with the funders as well, right? So if that's the case, right, then the question is just cost, okay? So I had told Ann, so I said, Ann. You booked my hotel, I'm gonna control my air. I said, because simply me flying, right? I always have to make sure that my routing is, yeah. And the thing is, when I do fly for my clients, generally speaking, right, my clients get billed for my entire flight. I will not do that to you because you are a nonprofit. Cause you know, you think, right, she's thinking. This is gonna take twenty-two hours? She's gonna bill me for twenty-two hours to fly there? And this is the, this is the special services section, right? So the thing is, right, so no, absolutely. I will take that into account, right? We'll look at the budget. I already know that the flights now, because I just booked a flight to Canada, right, in the month of August, right, it's summer rate period. That already the plane tickets are like three thousand plus.
Yeah, that's for a continent.
Uh and I'm not talking, and I'm not gonna torture you and buy first class, okay? Because first class right now is thirteen thousand. I'm like, this is what you're gonna say, these guys are trying to rob us blind. No, and you know what? It's it's just an ability to rob us blind. That's all it is for the Pacific. If I was to buy a similar ticket from anywhere else, um I'm going to be paying probably like four to five thousand. Yeah, I'm not gonna be paying thirteen. Um and so, you know, I mean, it's kind of, I looked at those rates and I just went. So I know Ann was concerned about that, you know, I will not enforce my private client rate on you. Yeah, okay, so I will not impose the private client rates for purposes of the um getting to the private funders, right? Cause I understand we're a nonprofit organization. I do make efforts to cut your costs where I can, okay? Um so if you do approve, right, and then that's what I'll ask you to do today, to make sure that that's taken care of. Um that the approval and then, uh, you know, the details, the practical details, I'll just work with Ann, like the hotel. That I told her, I said. So small details. No, absolutely. If I'm not staying at the conference hotel, then I prefer to be within walking distance. Just because it, you know what, time wise, right? So you will have to always think wherever I'm at, my time is the most valuable on the ground. And so I don't wanna be spending half an hour trying to get to the conference, right? This is the reason why typically we cannot get something inside the hotel. I just identify where the hotel is, so, yes. The problem is, I think it's Disney, isn't it?
Yes, so.
Florida.
So.
But you.
Maybe summer, maybe summer time, so.
Yeah.
So before.
So before you leave.
We have to do it.
Um I am gonna ask. Yeah, but that's the thing is their blogs are fully booked, yeah, exactly. Yeah, fantastic, yeah. So I will just leave you to the registration process. And then you tell me what the agenda is going to be, what days I must be present um in Orlando. Uh because since I'm so close to Miami, I figure I'm gonna visit some partners as well, right?
Might as well make you some.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And this is how, you know, we worked out, is, you know, um I have a conglomerate of friends. And so if we happen to be near the same region, we try to gather to work at the same time, so that that way we're not wasting. Anyhow, so before you leave today though, um I would recommend that at least that the board approves. That the issue of um election, right? Be dealt with as separate in my legal opinion, which is the executive session. Um and what is it to address and the potential. Maybe because I think that's the best way to do it. Now, I mean, obviously trustee Charles, you are the one who made the request. Um and so I I will tell you that in terms of the request made, that I think that it's better if the request. So if you would agree to table pending the legal opinion and the process that I'm proposing.
It's a process, as long as we follow the process and recommendation, then that's. That's the uh conversation that we have as a board, is that we want, you know, we want to yield to your uh legal team. Your diligence, so that way we can.
No, and I'm happy to drive the board, right? I mean, what I really don't want to do is, I don't want to be in the position to tell you what to do. I hope you always see that, right? Even in the way that I draft my legal opinions. It's not me just telling you this is what we need to do, because I'm telling you what what your options are. You don't have to follow my legal. You can tell me to leave, right? But but the thing is, I'm hoping that um we're going to be able to address. The amendments more freely, because as I remind you, right, these particular bylaws were not done by your attorneys. I can tell that just from, yeah.
Yes, I know.
Okay, and it was done by, you know, the administrative person, right? Some some person who, you know, so the thing is. You know, and then there were changes in the corporate law around the same time, right, and new reforms, so maybe there was a confusion. Um but I don't want this to be a habit, right, as well. Remember I was telling you our bylaws are meant to stay with us for. For a long time. I mean, I'll tell you the Law Bar Association, which I I manage, right, and I'm the president. But I also administer the bar association. We had our first major bylaw um modification. In twenty twenty-three. We reformed in nineteen seventy-something, nineteen seventy. Bylaws are not meant to be changed, right? And so now that we're, we've been in existence now for what? Fifteen years, so this is the eighth. Yeah, but this is our fifteen year, yes. So now that you're on your fifteen year, we can see that the bylaws have a good helping, right? And so this is where we, is in kind of in the executive committee session, can talk about what proposals we want to report, right? But I always encourage us not to like try to do twenty of them at a time, right? We hit one article at a time. And then at the next session, maybe, um, I don't know, maybe we can do it in advance, we assign uh one trustee per article. And then that one trustee can work with me on the one article on the side, right, to try to come up with uh some basic proposal. Right? And then when we get together at an executive committee session, we have two or three articles that we can look at together. So if we do it like that, I think it'll be more efficient.
Yes.
Um than just getting together and saying, here it is, and then reading it together and trying to figure out what's the solution. Also because I need to check our corporate laws and to make sure that what I'm recommending to you is is a. It's aligned with our legal law, it but it's also aligned with our charter law, right? And also it's not gonna make it impossible for you guys to work, right? So the purpose of the bylaws is to guide us, not to confine us.
And and to confuse us. But you know, because you have the legal eye, right? Also probably that one of the others is that this provision, I want to just say, this provision sixty-four. Is conflicting with, let's say, nine point four. And that your suggestion would be to repeal this in order for us to be. In compliance with uh local statute.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, because you can't have another body controlling. It's got to be the board controlling the rest, so.
We have gra- I have drafted uh. Based on our last year's agenda, like the changes for everyone. So we're going to give that to the trustees ahead of nine, so by the the next time we meet, it's already a date. Based on your proposal too, and on those items that we discussed already.
Yes, that's exciting.
That way you won't go back to those because you're already.
Okay, yes. So if I may be excuse.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
And in the glad you're you're able to join the the group to Orlando, that is very valuable.
Can I tell you, I, you know, in this last meeting that I came from, I went to a lobby session in DC. And I invited one of my girlfriends up on board of REPO, who I knew lots of territorial well with. And we were supposed to have girl time, but we ended up meeting with all these different private funders, right? For all these different organizations that fund the Pacific. And we kind of giggled, right, because we said, this is supposed to be girl time, right? But you see, this is the point, right, is, you know, when we work in nonprofit zone. Right? You have to take the opportunity to meet with the funders. So we've got to maximize this Florida meeting as much as possible.
We would be going to maximize it, because we want to bring in the group. What are the other alternatives? Financing, the weekend.
Absolutely, yeah, we need to look at some options.
We'll look at the terms.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that.
Get back to item number two. Um everybody sit here. There was.
She's down there. No, sometimes she already told us that sometimes if the internet connection, if she.
Okay, done?
Yes.
Okay, uh item number two is uh. A while back, we had, I have actually asked the CEO for advertising, I think the president was proposed to get this advertised. Or did we already advertise?
No, we didn't advertise, but it was.
Because only the clarification that we, that I think we have on the floor was like, well. It's an existing position, it's currently occupied.
Right.
So I don't think there were any, any, um. There's no need to advertise, I'm asking the rest of you guys looking to this. And the motion to receive approval of advertising for the certified leader position.
So move.
I second it.
Okay. Oh, those, in favor say I, I. Any discussion? However, this part, in this part, can we make sure that uh the professional growth plan is. That's coming up, we'll be discussing that. So because those are the things that I think the president would would like to put uh valuation on, that continuous um. Professional development is carried on, to take that decision. And I think it's also good for the integrity of the system. That you do not work out on the day-to-day and not go into different alternatives of training, where you can improve oneself, right? So that's all the, so uh motion to uh receive this advertisement that was put, I think, we already took this out before, I mean. Okay, so we're rescinding it now, because that's on the last, the last, last month's agenda. Okay. Motion?
Uh ready?
Anonymously, thank you. Guys, have it, thank you. Item number three. So, can we, can we do that? So I don't know if you have a copy while we're waiting for Ann to. But it's so hard to see the numbers. But um while Ann is setting it up, uh what we did is that. This is part of the culture program, within this program that we are collecting as much data as possible. Uh to expand and improve um and looking at the data, what we said that we need to do to improve the cultural career readiness. Again, for this coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and and thereafter. So here, uh if, now that the numbers are are bigger, so um. Right, this is ninth grade, right? This is ninth grade. So we did a survey of all the ninth graders. And. What's popping up is that, if you look at the numbers here, twenty-seven of our ninth grade students. Are wanting to go to college. They're indicating they wanted to go to college. So fifty-six uh freshmen altogether, twelve. In in immediate entry into the job market. So remember that, came up with a definition of what do we mean by student achievement, right? Student achievement means um college, career, um into the job market or military. So twelve of them uh indicated interest into getting right into the job mar. Eight into the career apprenticeship program. That Navy GPA and the other um government or government agencies that are offering that. And then, Ann, what happened here?
It moved, Dan.
Okay, so um the last one is military, about sixteen percent or nine. Were interested, that's that's for freshman. Now for for tenth grade. So, so again, the freshman career choice, um uh these are the clusters. And construction finance, again, all together at total, so we have about eight, one, what is it? Yeah, so um.
Number one is business.
Right, but number one is eighteen percent is the largest one there, right? Yeah, business, and then coming in second is. This is hard to see, like the numbers. Hospitality, no, six point seven. Where's the military there? Okay. Thirty percent and so forth. So it gives you a general idea of what the students' interests are. For tenth grade, let's just move on. Tenth grade, quickly, again, the uh on the side. On the side, the numbers there, so we can, there are fifty-two sophomore's. And I won't touch the screen. Fifteen college, eleven immediate entry, nine for career apprenticeship. Seventeen military, right, right? So and then what's interesting is that a large number of students are interested really going into the university. Or into a college, um higher education. Uh and go to junior. For juniors. And where's the lieutenant for juniors? Right, so we have sixty-one juniors, twenty-four again into college. Eleven immediate entry, nine career, and seventeen for military. So many of our students really are interested, showing interest on going to college or whatever.
Uh just only as a suggestion, because you know, when I look at that, uh let's say, college or military. Can we see difference between male, the gender?
Oh, the gender, oh, not yet, but we'll we'll proceed on that, that's a question.
That would be interesting, that would be an interesting set of data. And then the seniors. So we have sixty-one juniors, so this uh seniors, where's that?
Just showing a, the numbers.
So every school year, just to give you. We did.
Which is you and your your staff.
The staff, yes.
That's right.
So just to give you an overview, this is not the first year we did this.
This survey comes up every. No, 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 I think we collected this before.
Yes, so the survey that we collect every school year is from our seniors. When they graduate, where are they now? So that we have four or five years or more, actually. So where are you now? Do you, are you in college? Are you in the military? Are you in the workforce? So what prompted us to go collect this is to make sure that when we launch our daycare program. We match their um their their desires. Their options in the beginning of the school year, and if they graduate. And if they graduated, if they match, that means there's improvement. So um previously from the seniors who graduated, most of them, I have it, most of them go to they go directly to the workforce. They don't even go to college. But two years ago, yes, so two years ago, when we first started this in school year twenty three, twenty four, we developed the week care program, um developed the four domains. So every August, in the beginning of the school year, we ask them first, what do you plan to be after high school? Do you want to go to college, continue higher education? Do you want to go into the job market, uh immediately? Do you want to be the military or the work or or the apprenticeship program? So this is the second year we have this specific survey of the four domains.
And this is our student achievement definition of student achievement, does not the academic performance. We adopted that uh policy already. So if we see our students uh in any one of the domains, in any one of the domains, they were saying we succeeded as a school organization.
Why not if they are.
How do you track that internally? How do you, you have a mechanism when they're already out?
Yes.
Because I could say I want to, I want to hospitality, but how will you find that this person is uh okay, you prepare them for all the, all the information that they need, I E maybe short classes on this, some introduction to this and blah, blah, blah. And then do they care, and how far do we track this?
We do, so we have that. That's what we have been doing. Ever since, how far we we started it? Um after we graduate, we collected them, we collect them again, and then we compare it. I'll give you a specific example, because we did this prior, right? So what we always have.
But then who 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 adopted that, that 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 process?
The process of collecting. That was an internal process. After graduation, we always, um so ever since I started, we always contact our seniors where they graduated.
To clarify with uh for Madam Chair's purpose, the this data is the first time we're doing this because the other time strictly for seniors. Senior, so we never did nine any of that until we adopted the College and Career Readiness Program, the week care program.
But her question is the follow up, meaning after we begin.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not concerned about, you know.
So the follow up really, and that's why.
The reason why I want this on the floor is because we are about to renew the week care project, uh project. I want to know the effectiveness and the usefulness, the usefulness of this one. Because we're not gonna en- engage in this when we alone are doing all of this work. So I want to make sure that the C C R is looking to, and if this is the result, let's let's track, let's let's get tracking.
Yeah, and the.
So it's done in the the.
But we're the one collecting this.
Yeah, yeah, teachers are.
It has to be. So the other one that's uh the other, the other information is the uh ready three sixty, that's the tracker that we wanted to to bring on board, but you mentioned that there's another tracking system?
Have to look into other.
What is the other tracking system? This is the one that requires thousand, is only thousand five hundred. And they provide technical training throughout the year, and it's a tracking system. Whether they go beyond high school. They they do, the vendor three sixty, three.
But Zello also does it as well.
Yeah, three sixty ready, that's the track.
But we we have to.
Yes, and Zello also tracks it. That's why every school year, there's a report.
Yes.
How we what we do now for this.
Kinder really.
Yeah.
So we're looking not only high school, but maybe venture into the middle school in another year or two. To go down to the lower test and down to to uh elementary. We wanted to, we want to introduce the obviously career ready program starting from K to twelve.
But it's 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 ready formulated.
Yeah.
So there's no need, there's no need to reinvent the wheel when you already have some of the information and the the collection of data that you have to put in, so.
So it's, I think what Mr. Charvala was pointing out to is that the most important data here is the ninth grade. Because the ninth grade is the first.
They're exiting out.
Yeah, um on the first cohort. That is uh going to um experience the full four year course than the board.
And let, and let me add on, because this ninth grade, going on tenth grade, we have to have a very comprehensive tracking system in place. Someone who will monitor that data almost on a weekly basis.
Doing that now?
No, we, it's manual, but right now what we want is.
Who's gonna do this external for somebody from the outside?
It's a vendor, it's a.
Sir, um just to to clarify, okay, we need, we still need a team. Because even in the, even in the external, they will all, we we will still be the ones submitting the demand.
Here, we collect the data from here. What I'm trying to do is not, is not anymore expand on something that we're working, we're doing the work.
That we have to ourselves. So we have a data team this um school year, it it's made up of different people. And of course, the administrators are part of it, I'm part of it. Um Mr. Jonah being the ones who put it on the on the platform. Miss Kami for, Miss Kami who was also aware with with all those. Number one, the teachers. Because the teachers are the ones disseminating the survey every school year.
The vendor is not the one collecting the data. We are inputting the data, but it's a tracker. It's a tracker.
Which we track too, like this one. The platform that we are seeing here is is this program. The program is called uh Google Sheets. So somehow, this is partially manual, partially um um digitalized, because before we hand out hard copies. For last year, the first one, we had card, handed out hard copies. But this year, this is only sent in by link. So students are sending link and it spins out.
Yeah.
So this is actually a spin out of.
Design, right?
Yes, this program is um, we use um Google um spreadsheet to spit spit out. It's similar to Excel. But Google Forms, you just send the link, so once they're there, the students will fill it out digitally, and then it's fits out the.
The percent, the percentage of responses is out, how much?
Fits out, it's digitalized, so right.
Is is that, is that, is that, is that accurate on the percentage?
Yes, because it as.
Who prepared, who prepared that graph?
Uh Miss Kami, it's.
Very good, thank you.
The other thing.
So we have our own tracking, right?
Yes, this is considered a tracking device because it's already there. It fits out. As soon as the students fill out the survey, it already projects it.
The other thing that we're trying to do is once the tracker, the third year is now what we call one reality, and we have to create that. What's, what that means is that, let's say I'm a student and I want to go into auto net. But auto net upon completing my program, I will only be earning forty thousand dollars. So now we have a program where if you're going to pursue auto net, this is how much they make a year, but are you single? Are you married? Do you have a house? The utilities, the food, they count all that, they count all of that. And then they added whatever the amount, let's say at the end of uh you know, you're adding all the costs, forty five thousand and the work is already paying you forty thousand. Then the question is, do you still want to pursue this career?
This is, this when they exit, they can't, they exit G A C, right? They talk about tracking when they get out.
No, no.
Wrong with it?
Right, because we want to let the students know that.
How do you do that without funding?
No, we have it, we have.
But how do you do that without?
We're going to create that.
The funding?
No, not the funding, the 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 form, the system.
Okay, the system is there. Okay, obviously you will collect all those those information for this person to qualify, right? How do you sustain that?
So we we have to look into again, um that proposal of the program should be different program, different platform. Actually partially of what Mr. um Charvala um.
Is that the one, the work of the C C R?
Yes, so the Zello also, our program determines that. The thing is, um there's additional features that he mentioned. Like for example, how much you do that, that can also be done um using Zello. That's why I have to communicate with Zello because they're updated. They released a new update already.
That's important.
So maybe if, yeah, it's always recommended not to choose different programs. Because it will kind of go out from different, right? If Zello, which is a approved program already that we have implemented, and if we have a feature that is very similar to that, then we will do a study. That's the team's responsibility, if you do a study where it is more co- cost effective and um efficient as.
So if Zello can do that, then that would be great.
Yes.
Excellent.
Because the Zello already.
Tracking, they can do that, then that is excellent.
Because an example of the tracking that we mentioned through Zello, right? So it's a, it's a program. Um a child who's doing, who's engaged on Zello, they click on the choices. I'm interested or my skills are on, I'm good at business or finance or health science. Um and it also gives you like, when you apply as a personal officer, for example, it gives you the the average rate or salary of a personal officer in all the states. That is already provided by Zello. So but again, there's features that Mr. Charvala mentioned that we have to study and make sure that it is also provided so that we can marry them and make sure that, because we don't want to keep purchasing uh programs all the time because it affects the budget. I think that's what the chairwoman is trying to say. We have to um talk about it and discuss in our C C R meeting so that we can.
And and if you can even give um a Zello that the one that I gave you, the list of things that uh what is it, um ready three sixty can do, if they're able to do it even better.
Yeah.
Because then they are with one program. But but I received all this information from the San Antonio or Texas uh uh what is it, the A C T E conferences and really it was very um it was a very uh powerful uh sessions because now I see the relevancy that okay, all of these ideas can really enhance our C C R program at the school. So that's what I I brought to the table, that we need to start working on the tracker and then the reality one uh jobs.
That's in place.
Yes. We're, we're still being a study on whether those features will be um um of benefit for us. Considering also not just the benefit or the tracking, but we, the people who will be monitoring it, right? Because if it, if it's just duplicate work, then it's not efficient. We're still going to do the the back end, then why do that? Why, why procure that specific group program? I mean, it's a lot of work now because you have to study first any program. You cannot just decide right away, okay, this is nice, let's do it. Because everything still comes from our end, the data.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure because we're on this topic. Because this is up for renewal. I want to make sure that due consideration is done on the on the good and the bad. Uh what, there's no bad of that, but the overall uh benefit of G A C, since this is one contract that that's coming up, right? Not till September, right?
Yes.
Can I just hold up on everybody because Justin, I have a lot of news to go back. I need a report on budget and finance committee and the audit report. Can I jump on that for the H R?
Yes.
Thank you, please.
Mr. Charvala?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, all right, jump down to number five, uh budget and finance. Uh there is nothing for the spine, Mr. President. Order, and we are at the end of the school. Okay, item number six, the audit committee report. That was already done about two weeks ago. The copy of the citizen center report was done, and kudos to the administration.
What time?
Yeah, one time, and it's already submitted to the office. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, um the person that is overseeing that, I think he has no more questions because he read it himself. Now it's more like.
Great, good basis for now, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Good job on that, and that's all I can report for the two items, number five and six. And now that because I'm hungry, then I make a motion that we take a break or.
Oh, you want to eat? Okay, I thought you want to go back to work. Okay, that's not different. Please go ahead and take a break, let's take a uh.
Take a break.
Only one.
Let's, let's have a uh.
We should. We should do the.
Can we just do the number seven one last so that we can have the.
Finish this.
Or the selection, the selection because he's coming here, right?
Oh, yeah, let's do the vote.
Number two.
Can we go back to the business selection of the O T candidate? Before we proceed to the break, um just to give you an overview sometime.
Wait, wait, I.
Yes.
I don't know your.
I see his face there.
I.
He's actually here. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
We're going down to new business, right?
Yes.
I feel moved that we accept this, Mr. Alfred Vizet to come back as a charterer.
Motion on the floor.
I second.
In a second, let's vote. I, I, I have it. Thank you, select. It's done. Welcome, Trust Eric Pisa.
Let's give him a big round of applause.
All right.
Oh my God, where is he?
Oh, I'm hiding someone. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just saw his face out there.
So now we can uh reset.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Just finish it.
Can you just finish it once it's yours?
One more, one more, one more, one more item before we go to Android.
Anne, can you just tell us about the fielding application?
That's the incident report. So back on number seven. We presented the incident report to you on me second for the work session. This, what prompted us to this is because we want to make sure that we have the corresponding form and employee uh request on another employee.
The form is okay.
So make a motion.
Yeah, I feel moved that we approved the form.
Did the employee enter the report?
The employee is in the report, yes.
Second that, uh can I have a vote, please, for you, uh for the computational form of the employee incident report? Thank you, I have it.
So we can just go move to executive session now.
Yeah, is there any item with executive session? Okay.
What you said.
So they take a uh.
So then I propose a working lunch.
Yeah, working lunch, let's go. Uh maybe the motion to uh.
Yeah, working lunch, that's what I'm proposing. I need a motion.
Let's, let's not do any motion to.
Okay.
Recording stopped.